Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Education. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify today, please come up to the sergeant's desk and fill out a witness slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Calling the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to today's oversight hearing on the New York City Department of Education's spending of federal COVID-19 relief funds. I am Rita Joseph, Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you to everyone present here today and those of you who are testifying remotely. In March 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic caused severe disruption to the everyday lives of people throughout the United States, leaving a severe impact on education systems across our nation. This prompted the federal government to act legislation that would provide state and local government with relief funds to help combat devastating impacts of the pandemic and get our students back on track. New York City received a total of about $26 billion in federal relief funds, including nearly $8 billion for elementary and secondary education to be spent by 2025. Of the $8 billion in education funding, $7.7 billion was awarded to the DOE and $274 million was awarded to CUNY. These funds may be used for a wide range of spending to respond to health and safety issues and to support students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. The largest share of more than $7 billion in federal stimulus funds allocated to DOE, approximately $3.15 billion was budgeted to be spent in the fiscal year 2022. However, according to New York City Controller, between July 2021 and March 2022, nearly three-quarters into the school year, DOE has spent less than 50%, just $1.4 billion of the expected $3 billion in fiscal year 2022. Federal relief funding, most spending, almost $856 million was spent on expenses related to reopening with health and safety. Meanwhile, $221 million out of $984 million, only 22% of planned funds were spent on academic and instructional support. And $65 million out of $274 million, only 24% of the planned fund was spent on taking care of the whole child. With over $7 billion in aid to get our students back on track at the DOE's disposal, these numbers simply aren't adding up. As we recover from the pandemic, we are at a critical point in time where we must use all available resources to mitigate its lingering effects on our students and schools. Time is of the essence. Federal education aid must be spent in a way which ensures a recovery that offsets the harm done to our children and better prepares them for the future of academic success. Why, so why at such a critical point in time has the DOE been slow to spend federal COVID-19 relief funds? According to DOE pandemic-related delays, difficulties, and supply chain issues having all contributed to underspending and delayed programming rollouts, while contracting and procurement processes delayed other programs. However, as the spending of these critical areas of students falls significantly behind projections, schools are failing to provide urgently needed additional support to students. Equally concerning is whether money that is being spent is actually being spent effectively. Though over $260 million has been spent to address learning loss, the DOE provides no data on whether this funding is truly meeting the needs of students and bringing them back up to speed after experiencing two traumatic years of learning loss. Clearly, greater transparency is needed regarding DOE COVID-19 federal relief spending. Additionally, the fact that the DOE spending is meant to target schools with high concentrations of need, the New York Controller found that there does not appear to be a tight correlation between per-student stimulus allocations and need. There also have been reports in ineffective, inconsistent after-school programming in District 75 schools, which exclusively enroll students with disabilities and rank among the highest levels of stimulus allocations per student. Students with disabilities encounter significant inequities that predates the pandemic. If we cannot ensure the effectiveness of spending for these students, where does that leave them now? As the Chair of the Education Committee, I am also deeply concerned about how the DOE will sustain many long-term program expansions, which rely heavily on federal relief funds. During our hearing last month on early childhood program, New York City, we addressed the sustainability of 3K programs once the stimulus aid expires and the city reach a fiscal cliff in FY '25. Unfortunately, this problem extends beyond 3K alone. Several other long-term program expansions include community schools, restorative justice, mental health support, preschool special education, and increasing access to athletic teams are only half-funded in 2025, and their viability is in jeopardy if the DOE does not secure an additional $787 million in funding by 2026. At today's hearing, the committee hopes to get a better understanding of why the DOE has been slow to spend federal relief funds and how it plans on continuing to spend these funds to ensure that students receive the most of every dollar spent. We would also like to understand the DOE's plan to fund program expansions beyond the fiscal cliff, particularly the expansions of community schools, restorative justice programs, which we know are vital to students in underserved communities. I'd like to remind everyone who wished to testify in person today that they must fill out a witness slip, which is located at the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance, to allow as many people as possible to testify. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying on Zoom or in person. My colleagues, you have five minutes for questions. But before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are present. Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember Showman, Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Viles, and Councilmember Gennaro. Before we begin, now without further, I'd like to turn it over to the first witness panel. I'll turn it over to Council Committee Nadia Jean-François to administer the oath.
Emma Vedera and Sarita Scott, I would call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Emma Vedera? Sarita Scott? Thank you. Emma Vedera and Sarita Scott? For DOE.
Okay. Also like to acknowledge Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Ung. Ms. Sarita, Scott, you may start.
I'm starting.
You going first?
Thank you very much, though. Is this good? Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the Education Committee here today. My name's Emma Vedera. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for New York City Public Schools or the Department of Education. I'm joined here today by our Chief Financial Officer, Sarita Scott, as well as many of my other colleagues from the Department of Education who've worked on some of our key stimulus programs who you'll also hear from today. First, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the spending of federal COVID relief funds. Before I begin, I want to express our gratitude to the City Council, as well as to our state and federal partners for your and their leadership and advocacy in securing this critically important funding at a time of great need for our city, our students, and our educators. I'm excited to be here today and to have joined the New York City Department of Education team this summer after working on educational equity issues at the federal level, both in the Obama administration and in the Senate. I joined the DOE this July. I'm a native New Yorker who's very glad to be home working on these issues in the city I love. I now oversee our financial and operational teams at the DOE sorry, at the DOE with the same lens towards equity. Our finance team is led by Sarita, who also just joined us, who's another native New Yorker and lifelong public servant. She was previously at OMB for 10 years, most recently leading their education work, and we're lucky to have her. As you all well know, the pandemic has had a devastating impact on the fiscal health of our city and our schools, while increasing the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. Prior to the unprecedented COVID response investment from the city, state, and federal governments that we're here to talk about, the city was facing a dire economic situation. New York City, like localities across the country, has been on the front lines in combating the growing impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic-induced school closures and transition to remote learning forced our schools and educators to confront major mental health challenges, higher rates of absenteeism, and concerns about increasing academic need. The disruptions also directly impacted our educational services and posed fiscal and economic uncertainties we're still confronting. In my testimony, I'll provide an overview of the federal relief funding, how we've been spending and are spending this year in FY '23, the current status of our budget, and some of the fiscal headwinds we will confront in the years ahead. So first, as was noted by the Chair, the federal government has provided us substantial investments, three separate funding streams for elementary and secondary school relief over the course of the pandemic. The first was enacted in March 2020 and expired on September 30th, 2022. Called the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or CARES, that package provided approximately $700 million to the DOE, but actually resulted in no new net funding to us because the state decreased foundation aid by the same $700 million amount in FY 2021. The second federal funding stream was enacted in December 2020 and will expire on September 30th, 2023, labeled the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. It provided the DOE with approximately $2 billion, of which approximately $1.5 billion has been spent to date. And then the final federal relief legislation was enacted in March 2021. That one expires on September 30th, 2024. Called the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, it's providing approximately $4.8 billion in funding, of which $1.5 billion has been spent. From these latter two streams, the, since the first did not result in additional funding, the DOE spent approximately $300 million in FY 2021 and $2.7 billion in FY 2022. The current financial plan, following yesterday's November Plan update, which we'll touch on, includes $1.8 billion in spending in FY 2023 of these funds, $1.7 billion in 2024, and $250 million in 2025. DOE's used the stimulus funding to invest in key programs this year in the school year in FY 2023, all of which were in this year's adopted budget, including $456 million for 3K programming this year, $236 million for summer RISING, $464 million in school budget support, including targeted allocations for students' academic recovery, special education recovery services, and mental health services, $227 million in academic services and supports, including mosaic curriculum, pre-K special education, arts, computer science, and learning to work, $60 million in community schools expansion, as mentioned by the Chair, allowing us to support approximately 100 schools, $132 million in devices and IT support, including LTE and Help-Deft services for families, $29 million in the expansion of PSAL programs, again as mentioned by the Chair, $132 million for other additional priorities, including $49 million for school nurses to provide nursing at every DOE school, $33 million to expand career pathways programming, $11 million to expand bilingual education classes and support, $11 million to expand parental engagement, translation, and interpretation services, $10 million for new digital teaching and learning, $9 million for Project Pivot, supporting community-based organizations in providing violence interruption activities, $7 million to expand literacy and dyslexia, and $2 million to expand gifted and talented. The above is a statement of values for our city's students and families, prioritizing sending hundreds of millions of dollars this year directly to our principals and schools, 3K and early childhood providers, and school-based programs. It invests in both our recovery and a new vision for our schools, providing additional targeted support services for vulnerable student populations, while transforming students' experiences and putting them on paths of long-term economic security. To give a bit more detail on a couple of these priorities, the Chancellor recently announced Project Pivot, which empowers and equips young people with tools to make positive choices for themselves, uplifting pro-social development pathways, working with local CBOs that have been doing great work in our communities for years. I know literacy is a shared priority, and thanks to the investment of stimulus funds, the city now has the most comprehensive approach to supporting public school students with dyslexia in the United States. And to put more of our students on a pathway to career success once they complete school, the administration has expanded the Career Readiness and Modern Youth Apprenticeship Program, which will connect 3,000 students across more than 50 schools with paid multi-year apprenticeships. Unfortunately, as noted, while these investments financed through relief funding are critical, we do not expect the federal COVID relief support to continue. We will need to work together over the coming years to sustain and build on these efforts that are so essential for our students and schools. Just want to say, across these investments, we share your commitment to ensuring that stimulus funding continues to be spent equitably, impactfully, responsibly, and transparently. As both Sarita and I settle into our new roles, we're eager to do our work, both with a focus on equity and the spirit of collaboration and transparency. Transparency about processes, how dollars are distributed, used, is essential to ensuring the best possible decisions and adhering to good government here. We know the importance of enabling our communities, families, and students, as well as our elected official partners, to have the information they and you need and are eager for your feedback and ongoing partnership there. Budget, our budget update. So you all know a lot of this, but to run through it, the majority of our budget remains spent on schools and services that take place in schools. In the adopted budget, just under half of the $37.6 billion included directly supports school instruction, programming, and staffing. Another 40% is associated with non-controllable costs, such as legal mandates, debt services, fringe benefits, and pension costs. Of the remaining 13%, 11% goes to operations support, facilities, transportation, food, and utility, and 2% goes toward central administration. This year, our per-person spending actually remains well above pre-pandemic levels, growing from just under $26,000 in FY 2019 to about $31,000 this year. The Chancellor's laser-focused on directing as much funding to schools as possible, and in the last several months, in part thanks to your partnership and advocacy, we have done just that. Last week, we were proud to announce that we'd be holding school budgets harmless for any lower-than-projected enrollments in this year's mid-year budget adjustment process, and I understand that money is actually starting to go out to schools today. That amounts to approximately $200 million investment in school budgets. I want to thank the Council and the Chair in particular for your advocacy and partnership on this. This is the third straight year for which stimulus dollars have been used to hold schools harmless from mid-year enrollment changes. This has been especially important as our communities recover from the pandemic, the main purpose of stimulus funding, so thank you. That funding is in addition to some of the other increases in flexibilities to support school budgets and early childhood providers this summer and fall. That includes $12 million to support our newest students from asylum-seeking families, over $50 million in hardship supports budget appeals for schools, additional flexibility we provided on $100 million in school budgets to allow schools to have more flexibility about how those dollars were spent, and most recently, announced the week before last, the guarantee that early childhood education providers who experience lower-than-expected enrollment in FY '22 will be paid at least 75% of the value of their FY '22 contracts. Again, we thank the Council for your leadership and look forward to working with you on your shared priorities. Last, but not least, fiscal headwinds ahead. I noted previously that the stimulus funding is due to expire, last of which in September 2024, and we don't expect the federal government to renew those investments. In addition, as the Mayor and several independent budget monitors, like the Citizens Budget Commission, have noted, the city's broader out-year revenue picture is challenging even beyond that loss of stimulus dollars. The Mayor has asked all agencies to plan accordingly. So we want to adjust with transparency some of what you have seen in the recently released November Plan, released yesterday afternoon, including the administration's plan to meet the Department of Education's share of the citywide program to eliminate the gap, or PEG. While the November Plan assumes a continued investment in 3K at our current funding level of $456 million a year of stimulus funds, it no longer assumes an expansion of 3K with stimulus funding next year compared to this year. Instead, current 3K funding levels will remain steady. That amounts to a savings of $284 million compared to what was previously projected in stimulus funding in each of fiscal years '24 and '25. That's been reallocated to meet baseline needs in our budget. So that allows us to meet a very large portion of the administration's PEG without cuts to existing programs or services. The November Plan also reflects savings from lower-than-expected spending this school year associated with the return of unvaccinated staff and slower hiring of central staff and school safety agents. I want to emphasize that no reductions to fair student funding or additional cuts to existing programs or services are included in the November Plan. In addition to these economic headwinds, the reality remains, as the Chair noted, that we're facing an impending fiscal cliff when stimulus funding runs out after 2024 and 2025. The FY 2024 budget currently includes almost $100 million in 3K services with no funding source in the baseline, as well as approximately $80 million supporting social workers and mental health professionals, $60 million mentioned for community schools, and tens of millions for other priorities such as PSAL, arts, computer science, learn-to-work, and more. On net, like the Chair, we estimate there's over $700 million in activities in FY 2024 that do not have a funding source once stimulus expires. There also remain at the DOE serious ongoing annual operational deficits in our budget in areas like Carter Cases and their growth, facilities, and transportation. These areas are ongoing annual structural deficits driven by cost growth over and above inflation, and they'll need to be addressed in a fiscally responsible way for this year and the years ahead. While the DOE has met savings targets to date, we have a lot of hard choices in front of us as the stimulus funding expires. We look forward to working with you and making these decisions to continue to support key programs. Your partnership and our collective advocacy to state and federal leaders are crucial to ensuring that we're continuing to provide our students, families, and educators with the resources they need during this recovery period and the years ahead. Thank you again for the opportunity for all of us to come speak with you today, and we look forward to answering any questions you have.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Menon.
Christina Foti, James Morgano, Flavia Puello, and Lucius Young. I'm going to swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth? Oh, please raise your right hand, I'm sorry. I'll call on each of you individually. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Flavia Puello? James Morgano? Christina Foti? Lucius Young? Thank you.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. On November 7th, DOE announced that it would hold schools harmless for lower-than-projected enrollments in this year's mid-year adjustment process, ensuring that no schools would lose money due to mid-year enrollment. Where will the $200 million in funding come from? And does the $200 million include amount schools will not be required to give back due to higher-than-projected enrollment losses or simply the additional amount that schools are due because of enrollment increases above projection, or both?
Yeah, so to answer your first question, we're, sorry. Is that better? We're working with our OMB partners and reallocating federal stimulus so that will include unspent FY '22 dollars, repurposing FY '24 dollars so that we can address mid-year adjustment, hold harmless, as well as deal with some of the structural deficits that we have in our budget that Emma mentioned in her testimony. As to your second question, it's both. Essentially with the mid-year adjustment, there are schools that lost, there are schools that gained, and so the schools that lost, they will not lose any funding, will hold them harmless, and for those that gain, we will infuse those dollars to those schools.
We're looking for a breakdown, I think I asked for that. Will we be able to get a breakdown of each of the schools and how much did each of the schools receive?
Yes, we can most certainly share that with your office.
Definitely, thank you. So regarding the so-called fiscal cliff, IBO identified $3.2 billion in ARPA and CRSA federal funding that DOE intend to use to permanently expand long-term programs. So we talked about long-term programs in terms of 3K, restorative justice, which is near and dear to our hearts here in the Council, and community schools. How do we plan on keeping these long-term programs funded with temporary dollars?
Yeah, so as Emma mentioned in her testimony, we have over $7...
The speaker.
Okay. Yep.
Bring it closer to you.
Okay.
Don't be afraid.
All right. As Emma mentioned in her testimony, there's over $700 million in baseline programming that is being supported with temporary federal stimulus dollars. As she also mentioned, where, you know, the Mayor has been very open about the tough fiscal times that we're facing, and some hard choices will likely have to be made to make sure that all programming is sustainable. This is where we would appreciate your advocacy and your partnership as we move towards adopting a FY 2024 budget to ensure that those priorities are funded within the budget.
Last year, this Council did do that. We funded summer RISING, we expanded summer school, I mean, community schools because we knew it was needed in walking around and seeing the schools and how this COVID impacted our students tremendously. So we want to make sure that we continue, and restorative justice is very important to us. We want to see other means of punishment for our New York City kids. Does the DOE have a plan to deal with these expenses? You used a lot of this money to plug in holes. Do you plan to continue using some of the money to continue to plug in holes throughout the year?
Yes, because of the number of different things that we're dealing with in terms of making sure that we're providing resources to schools and also dealing with the large amount of structural deficits that we have, we are using all of the funding that is allocated within our budget.
Okay. We also know that DOE has used federal funds to help plug in holes of the budget, but New York City supports services and plans to continue using that money to do so.
Yes.
How much of it has gone to New York School Support Services?
I can get that number for you. I don't have the number in front of me, but I'll make sure that you get it.
Please do. So do you plan on continuing to fund the New York School Support Services beyond the school year?
In this current fiscal year? Sorry, just for clarity.
During the rest of the school year?
Yes.
From the data provided the first week of March 2022, per the Controller's Office, April 2022 COVID spending analysis, the DOE has spent less than 50% of just $1.4 billion of the expected $3 billion in FY '22 federal stimulus fund. How much of the $3 billion in FY '22 stimulus funding has been spent as of today?
$2.7 billion.
What accounts for the difference in spending between the first week of March 2022 and nearly eight and a half months later till today?
So that was just spending at a point in time. DOE spends down funding, paying bills throughout the fiscal year, so it is essentially just paying off the bills that we have.
Can you also please update us on the delay in related to hiring difficulties and supply chain issues? Where are hiring issues the greatest, what is being held up? For example, we were supposed to hire shelter-based coordinators. We haven't heard about that. Foster care office. We, I want to, I need an update on those hiring delays because as you can see, our shelter system is at capacity, and more than ever, we will need those shelter-based coordinators, especially bilingual one for our new New Yorkers and for existing students that are already in the shelter system.
Yes, so I will turn to my, oh, sorry, I'll turn to my colleague.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the City Council. My name is Flavia Puello, and I'm delighted to be here, and thank you for raising the important question about the staffing of STH coordinators as well as the foster care team, and I have some good updates on that end. In terms of the foster care team, we have hired eight out of the nine foster care staff members that we were slated to have to staff that team. So right now, a lot of the work for that team is really providing direct support to schools, ensuring that we're looking at the data, where the students, if they're high school students, looking at things like, do they need support? school students, looking at things like, do they need support in terms of academic programs? Are we connecting them and really being a connector between the family, the schools, the foster care agency, to ensure that we're leveraging their support and their capacity to eliminate educational barriers? So I want to publicly thank you and acknowledge your advocacy in that space and the supports that you provided to make that possible. In terms of the students in temporary housing coordinators, as you know, we were original, originally slated to have 75 of them, and then to the support of city council, we were able to add an additional 25. As of the moment, we have received over 260 applicants. From the 260 applicants, we have been able to interview over 100 of the candidates, and there are 70 of the candidates that are at different stages of the hiring process, including a cohort of 18 that are already hired. And I wanted to be specific about the cohort because one of the things that we are doing is moving that process speedishly, but also looking at a cohort model to onboard people because we want to ensure that we are creating a thoughtful and meaningful experience so that they can transition effectively to support our students and families. In fact, one of the newly hired coordinators this week began, like, acclimating themselves with the Row, the Row Hotel, the Hark Center, so that looking at spaces where we see gaps and what we can be intentional around the supports that we're providing to the students and families in shelter. And we'll be happy to answer any additional questions or to have a follow-up with you.
I have one more question for you. We know that your, young lady who was in charge of your early childhood payment process had resigned, is that position been filled? And how is that working with some early childhood providers? Has that vacancy been filled?
I don't believe that vacancy has been filled. I can check. We are staffing up our early childhood team and have a representative here from the portfolio team on the early childhood team who can talk about it, but.
You're answering the question? You're coming? It's, it's, is, is that?
We don't have, we don't have an update.
Do you have a timeline as to when that office will be staffed up?
We can look into that and get back to you.
And please keep me posted.
Will do.
Thank you. So describe the current trend in funding allocation for academic recovery, how it relates to students, school district, which has a high concentration of students in District 75.
I'm so sorry. Would you repeat the question? My apologies, I'm just taking a note.
Describe the current trend in fund allocations for academic recovery, including how it relates to school districts with high concentration of needs in District 75.
Got it. So two of our, and Christina, do you want to come up here and join me as well? Christina is the head of our special education division, so big picture in terms of the big academic recovery spends we are doing. There's the academic recovery SAM, which is flowing out to schools across the system, which flows out to schools based in large part on student need, right? So students with greater needs, including students with disabilities, get larger allocations, students in foster care, students in shelter and temporary housing, students who are English language learners, and students with economic need. And so that's how those dollars are flowing out to schools. In addition to the academic recovery SAM and FY 22 and 23, we also have a substantial investment in special education recovery services, which Christina can talk through, and in summerizing, but on the special ed side, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the committee. In terms of this year's allocation for special education recovery, we have allocated 104 million dollars, and we're going to be doing, and we are in the process of doing many things. As far as last year goes, you're, you're very familiar with, with all the services that we, we offered. We're really proud, to my knowledge, that we are the, a school district that provided the largest scale recovery efforts, not just because we are the biggest, but because we allocated 236 million dollars to our recovery efforts last year with a distinct allocation by students with IEPs to schools. So every child with an IEP last year was accounted for, and there was money given directly to schools to provide recovery services for students based on the number of students with IEPs. This year, we are taking on our compensatory services process. We have, every child with an IEP during their IEP meetings this year will be reviewed for whether or not they require and are in need of compensatory services. To date, we've already had almost 25,000 IEP meetings, and during those IEP meetings, we are individually reviewing student progress, using their IEP goals, and making determinations as to whether or not students need additional support. On top of those reviews, we are expanding our sensory gyms. This year, with stimulus funds, we were able to open 10 free sensory gyms staffed by trained DOE professionals to provide speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. It was an incredible accomplishment this year and incredible service to our families. We're going to move, we're going to increase the number of those sites to 80 this year, and we're in the process of opening those sites. In addition, we're allocating funding for assistive technology training to families attending, bringing their children to those sites, while in the waiting room, families will be able to, to receive assistive technology training for students with communication needs. So we've allocated money for that. We're also going to be providing Saturday academies, teacher training, and community partnerships, additional support for our IEP teams, given all that they are doing day in and day out to provide, to assess for these services. We're continuing our 21-plus, so that's our initiative where we are granting students who are 21 additional time to remain in our system, given the impacts of COVID, and supporting them as they make their plans for their next steps when they leave the DOE. And we are also continuing with our family support through our very public and thankfully very popular Beyond Access Series, which is an online virtual forum every week where we provide training to families in special education topics. Pardon the long-winded explanation, Councilmember, but we're, we're excited about these initiatives and grateful to have the funding for them.
Thank you. How was the formula, how, what type of formula did you use and to, to, to target the funding? And now that we have new New Yorkers, how does the formula change to include our new asylum seekers?
Yeah. So last year, it was by student. This year, we're going to do those, we're doing those individual reviews so that we can determine were there any, number one, did the child, did the student make progress? Number two, did they get all their services, right? And if, if a child is struggling with progress or is not getting any of their services, they're going to be entitled to one or a combination of the services I just described. And so in this year's budget is different than last in the sense that we have done distinct carve-outs for every one of these initiatives, including compensatory services. And thus far, we feel that we do have the funds we need this year to provide these services, and we're really delighted to have these programs in, in progress.
Thank you. You wanted to add on to?
Well, I was just going to say, and if you're asking about the broader academic recovery and fair student funding, both of those do provide additional funding and weights for asylum seekers who qualify as students of temporary housing, sometimes in other categories as well. And so there is additional funding allocated for those students in that way.
Okay, thank you. That was my follow-up. Thank you for that. As per the controller, the first week of March, only, the, you, the DOE only spent 5% of the expected 12 million dollars in funding for the expansion of restorative justice. This council funded restorative justice. Can you provide us an update on the spending to date? How much of the expected 12 million has the DOE spent toward expanding restorative justice programs?
I don't think we have that number to date for this year, but I know they are working on it, and we can definitely get that to you.
Do you plan to, you're going to expand the program, how many students do you expect to serve?
Same response, and we can get it to you.
So that means you won't know where and when. So let me ask another question. What's the holdup with expanding the program? We funded the program this council, and we're very proud of that. We funded this program, so what's the holdup in expanding restorative justice?
So we are funding the program using stimulus dollars this year at the higher level, so that funding has been allocated, can check on what the holdup is at the actual spending of funds, but the funding is, is there for this year.
For example, restorative justice programs are putted by 15 million in FY 24 and 7.3 million in FY 25. With funding running out by FY 25, how is the administration ensuring that these services will, restorative justice will continue beyond 2025?
Thank you for the question. So going back to what we stated earlier in terms of having over 700 million dollars worth of baseline programming in the budget supported by federal STEM, it's definitely needs to be a part of ongoing conversations about how we deal with those programs.
I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Krishna Sanchez and Felice. I'm going to allow my council, my colleague to do the next set of questions. She has to leave.
Okay, the, the DOE is no longer offering special education recovery services at schools this school year. Instead, the DOE is expanding the popular seed program, new programs for students with sensory needs, and is asking schools to provide compensatory makeup services to students who need them to address their unmet needs from the pandemic. Given, in late October, the DOE allocated funding to schools to offer compensatory makeup services to students with disabilities. Last year, the DOE allocated more than 157 million dollars to schools to offer special education recovery services. However, this year, the DOE allocated only 12.4 million dollars to schools to offer compensatory, compensatory services. Students with disabilities have the legal right to compensatory services when they don't get the instruction services they need. Given that only 40% of students with disabilities received any special education recovery services last year, with many starting very late in the school year and not receiving the full amount needed, and the significant unmet needs of students with disabilities during the pandemic, why is only 12.4 million dollars allocated this year? And how will schools ensure that students with disabilities receive the makeup services they need and have a right to receive?
Thank you, and I appreciate you keeping the needs of our students with IEPs front and center. With regard to our, our approach last year versus this year, last year's approach was every child needs help, we need to get this to every student, and an allocation went out on an individual student basis. We then have been progress monitoring, so we are centrally watching the progress that our students with IEPs are making via their IEP goals. And from there, we've trained our school psychologists and our IEP teams this year to make determinations about the need for compensatory services. And so we've also sent, sent out a communication to families about any missed services, and in order to receive additional services this year for any family that is in need of them, that is why we are, exactly why we're, to your point, expanding the sensory gyms so that they can get additional services there. While those are physical sensory gyms, they are staffed by occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, that will provide those additional services that were missed. And as I mentioned before, we have a distinct allocation that we've set aside, particularly for compensatory services on top of all of these initiatives that we're expanding.
Do you keep a list of all of the school districts and then, and the needs they have for the students with disabilities?
We've, we've been, yes, absolutely. I mean, we, we track every aspect of special education service provision by district, by discipline, by service category, and as I said earlier, also by student progress.
So is that a list you can share with the committee?
Yeah, they're all, the vast majority of that is, is all public reporting obligations that we've, we have set forth by the city council, and we are committed to those, to those public reporting obligations.
Because, because students with disabilities have obviously a greater need, and with, you know, when, when school started, it was difficult for students that weren't acclimated to being in school, and now those with disabilities have even a higher reach, so want to make sure that they're all taken care of. So we want to, we want that to move forward. What information has gone to parents of students with IEPs to inform them of how to access compensatory services for their children and what to do if their school says they can't provide them?
Yeah, we have a communication that we can share that if it has not gone out, it will be going out, and my team will confirm, directly to parents about how to access additional services.
And is this information, this information I'm gathering is also shared with superintendents? I met with the superintendent of one of my districts this morning. I want to make sure that they have all the tools and the information and the services they need to help people in the IEP classes, because that's really important.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We, we will make sure that every superintendent has that in their, their hands and are also happy to share with you as well.
Last year, some schools were unable to provide special education recovery services because their teachers and service providers do not want to work after the school day or on Saturdays for compensatory services. This year, can schools use their funding to contract with private providers such as private funding tutoring companies if their staff doesn't have time during the school day to provide makeup instruction or services on top of their regular caseload and doesn't, don't want to work after school or on weekends?
Yeah, that, absolutely. That was a definitive challenge last year. That is also why we've been actively working to hire additional providers and why we have incentive programs around these disciplines. We are staffing up and have been staffing up, and our commitment to the increasing after-school and Saturday sites via the sensory gyms is, is really evidence of our desire to meet the unfilled needs that, that our students had last year, and of course, address any unfilled needs from this year.
So one, just one other thing. So the superintendent I spoke to today said that she had a higher, she's looking for funding for a company to do this, so if you guys are funding that, can I come to you separately so we can have that conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Councilmember Wessler?
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today, and congratulations to you both on your new positions. They are not easy jobs, so you have all of our empathy. Firstly, I just, I'm going to focus my questions primarily on the topic of 3K, which is of tremendous import to me and, and the members of this body, and I've been gravely disappointed by the updates we've been getting from the Adams administration and the chancellor and the team at DOE. Could you just, again, when will 3K be universal in New York City? Date certain, just without the?
Thank, thank you for the question, Councilmember. So right now, we have, as the chancellor mentioned earlier this month, approximately 40,000 available 3K and pre-K seats, 15,000 of those are in 3K. And the work that we're doing is making sure that we have seats available in the setting type and located closely to families where they need them. So we will continue to do the work to shift seats as needed. So recently, on the Upper East Side, for example, we had a pre-K center that had two unfilled pre-K classes that we converted to 3K classes. We've worked with the superintendent on Staten Island to move some seats.
Totally appreciate that there's a whole lot of effort to move things around, and that it's a complex and big city. But when will 3K be universal in New York City? Just would appreciate a date certain.
Again, right now, we have over 15,000 available 3K seats, so the issue is making sure we have those seats as close as possible to families who need them.
Are you, are you?
Yeah, open and available. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is already universal in New York City?
I'm saying there are 15,000 unfilled 3K seats.
Okay, so then, I, I mean, I have a series of additional questions, but considering we have providers that are closing down because DOE's failure to pay them, considering that we have providers that are having to shut down because of DOE's failure to pay them on a timely basis, it's hard for me to understand how you're all making the argument that 3K is already comprehensively meeting the needs across the city. I have families in my district that are unable to access 3K seats in Greenpoint, so I, I'm, I'm confused. Is, are you, are you saying that 3K is universal and there's no need for further expansion?
Well, certainly, Councilmember, if you have families that are looking for 3K, send them to us. We will work with them to find them a seat as close as possible. There's- There's, there's work to do in continuing to make sure we have the right seats and the right locations and the right setting type. We offer a mixed delivery model in, in 3K, and so we want to meet family needs where they are. I will also turn to my colleagues to talk a little bit about the rapid response team in terms of your question around payments for providers.
It's okay. I'd like to focus on the funding at hand, the issues at hand. In the updated November plan released yesterday, my understanding is that there's $568 million in savings that you all have accounted for by rightsizing 3K, so in FY '24, removing over half a billion dollars in funding for 3K in FY '24. Is that right?
So just to be clear, we're not proposing any funding reductions for pre-K in FY 2024. We're proposing continuing current spending levels. It continues to be our largest spend of stimulus dollars in FY 2024.
The half a billion dollars that you're not gonna be spending next year, next fiscal year on early childhood education, you're able to meet the comprehensive needs and realize universal 3K in September despite taking a half a billion dollars away?
So I'm gonna turn back to James in a second, but just to be clear, it's over multiple years, so the reduction for next year is half of, half of that.
I saw $568 million in FY '24 and $284 million in cost avoidance in FY '25 and '26, but my accounts, those are phenomenal sums of money that you're taking out of early childhood education.
So I'll let, I'll let my colleagues speak to the, the numbers and the finance, but my understanding is we're maintaining the funding levels for 3K. We're maintaining the services that we're providing, and the work that we're doing on the portfolio planning is to make sure we have seats in the right location where families need them.
So just in, yeah, so just in terms of the numbers that was compared to the planning and continual expansion of the program, the program that's funded by short-term stimulus dollars?
Now, you're decreasing the expansion that had been planned and intending for a smaller number of seats for 3K in the years ahead.
Well, on the smaller number of seats, I would, I would turn to James, who noted we already have a number of empty seats this year that we're working to realign.
Which to me is a reflection of failure of DOE outreach and engagement, considering there is tremendous demand for this essential program throughout the city, and I still don't feel like I've gotten a straight answer to the very simple question that I keep asking is when will we have universal 3K in New York City? Because there is no answer to that question, right? I mean, I, I keep asking it, it keeps not getting answered because there is no plan. The mayor has walked back his commitment, the chancellor has walked back the commitment that has been made to the people of the city of New York to implement universal 3K. And if this administration is not prepared to put the funding in, then I strongly encourage my colleagues in the council to step up and make this the priority that it needs to be. Working families and our youth depend on high-quality early childhood education, and if you all aren't prepared to make it happen, then we need to take it into our own hands.
Thank you, guys, if I can answer that. So we will continue to focus on building out the birth-to-five continuum. We will maintain funding levels. We have 40,000 available seats that are not filled across 3K and pre-K, and we're going to continue to work to make sure we're moving seats into locations where they're, they're most needed. And again, I mentioned the example on Staten Island where we moved seats from the North Shore where there was an oversaturation of seats, and so it was really hard for providers because you had too many seats that they, that they were competing with. And we'll continue to move seats where we need them. We're doing a needs assessment now, and we'll continue to work to make sure that families have a seat, the type of seat that they need, as close as possible to their home or their work, whichever is their preference. Thank you for the question.
The only thing I would just add, and James, it would, you should jump in wherever here, but the only thing I would add is that as part of universal is also ensuring the expansion of services for students with special need as well. Obviously, we are working to expand that as well, obviously not going as fast as we would like necessarily, but we are working to do that, too. And I just want to say, when we think about universal, making sure we're centering those students who have been promised these services for a long time and including them in these expansion conversations are really critical.
Councilmember Lewis?
I'm sitting here listening to my colleague, and I'm like, if you gave all of us 2,500 seats, we would have 3K, you know. But anyway, thank you so much for making time to, to meet with us today. My questions are gonna be focused on effectiveness in programming regarding funding. I'll be quick. So one of the concerns surrounding the slow spending of stimulus funding was the, the prospect that allocated funding that would have eventually expired and have to be turned to the DOE. So the first question is, how has unspent money been returned? Has unspent money been returned to the DOE? And if so, what's the department's plan regarding those lost funds?
Yep, thank you for the question. So as I stated, we are working with our OMB partners to do a realignment of federal stimulus, and that will include any unspent stimulus from fiscal year '22, looking into federal stimulus that's in, in the out years, and trying our best to address all of the competing priorities that we have within our budget.
So whatever wasn't spent will be rolled over?
Yes, and, and you'll see that in a future plan.
And when will you be able to follow up with the committee on that?
I would say we should definitely have ongoing discussions about it, but it will be in a future plan, so that could be the preliminary or the executive budget. I'm not, not, you know, I don't have the authority to say when it will happen, but we will see it in a plan.
I would say the sooner the better, but thank you for that. Second question is, while the amount of money spent on relief programs is important, so is making sure that these dollars are having an impact. So I wanted to know what measures has the DOE implemented to track the effectiveness of the programs being funded, their impact on students' academic, social, and emotional recovery? Some of the programs you mentioned earlier was dyslexia, like you gave a whole breakdown really quick, but if you could just let us know the effectiveness of those programs thus far.
So first of all, just want to say very much appreciate the question and want to note that across, you know, there's a lot of different programs in there. It's very hard to back out the impact of a particular program in a particular school when we're looking at so many different inputs at the same time. We have a set of data we track across our schools, which Lucia's can talk, speak to more, that we're looking at academic assessment data, that we're looking at social emotional screeners, that we're looking at attendance and chronic attendance, right? And all of these are part of how we look at how schools are doing broadly, and that's data we're regularly reviewing. In terms of on specific programs where it's possible, do you want to talk through dyslexia or anything else?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. With regards to the dyslexia, first of all, I wanted to say that we have launched the most comprehensive literacy rollout for the city this fall. And I think one of the things I want to say is that we've opened up 160 dyslexia sites across the city, pilot sites, and we also have opened up three dyslexia school programs in three districts. Our commitment is really to the quality of phonics curriculum in K-2 and making sure that all our teachers are trained literacy instruction and also with the reading interventions. And one of the things that we want to do is to make sure that these pilot sites, when we're working closely with the schools, is that when we're working with them, part of it is looking at their schedules and their, their programming and making sure that interventions are a part of this work. And one of the, the pieces that we're strongly emphasizing is the capacity piece of really kind of supporting the teachers that are doing this work. The early identification is really a huge support in this, where we have timely instruction, decisions are meant for kids that are identified at risk with reading difficulties. And so one of the things that these lessons learn are to increase the opportunity for like the expansion of this work going forward.
So let's talk about, a little bit about a program that was very important for our city, the social-emotional programming in our schools, right? So how much funding was allocated towards that? What is the effectiveness of that? How is it being tracked? How much are you proposing for FY '24 regarding that program? Because dyslexia is, that, that's something that was implemented under this administration, but social-emotional is about two years. And that's it for my questions, but you can still answer.
There's a lot of things that tend to be categorized as social-emotional learning, right? Social workers, mental health support, so just want to make sure we're giving you some numbers that align with something.
Yep, and so that would be the, that was, it's about 86 million. 86 million? Yes. Yes. Well, that's in federal stimulus funding, and that's for, that's the FY '23 allocation.
You have to talk on the mic.
I'm sorry. What that doesn't include is community schools funding, right? Other pieces that also provide additional social-emotional supports for students but aren't showing up in that one line of social-emotional supports and screeners, which is the line she's just sharing.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councilmember Lewis. Just to piggyback off of councilmember Lewis's question, if we funded this with stimulus dollars, how do we sustain it?
That is a great question, thank you. Again, going back to what I said in terms of the programming that is baseline, and now is currently supported by federal STEM, I think that is very important for us to continue to have conversations about how we sustain programming that we prioritize within our budget. So looking forward to having those discussions with you because between Emma and I, we can only spend the money that is allocated to us and would really love to work with you in terms of making sure that priority programs are funded within our budget.
The only thing I would add, because completely agree with all of that, and I think that's ma, mostly the answer, but just because, just mentioned community schools, right? We do know some of these are big federal priorities and state priorities as well, and so thinking about how we can work together to advocate at other levels of government, which are currently funding some of these programs with one-time dollars, where community schools are a real priority, for example, I think is also part of what we're looking to do together.
Thank you. Councilmember, councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I, to have, just to start with, a 3K question, pre-K. And the reason is the following: I know a school that has an extra room. They would like to, because they have a huge waitlist of young people who want to be in the program, because particularly in Harlem, parents go elsewhere fast. And so I don't understand, picking up on councilmember Wessler, the issue is if you have people coming into the school at a young age, you're likely to keep them in the public schools. Otherwise, they're gonna go to parochial or charter, God help us. So when you have an extra room, why wouldn't we put more money into that opportunity? Apparently, they got told no. So I, I do think that getting children in early is your biggest way to keep kids in the public school system. So why in the world would we cut this program?
So just to reiterate, thank you, councilmember, for the question, and my colleagues can chime in on the funding. We, we are not cutting the program. We're maintaining the funding levels for future years, and my colleagues...
We need more.
We're maintaining the funding levels for future years. We have thousands of available seats in areas where they are oversaturated with too many seats, which has created competition among programs and made it challenging for them. And so we're working to make sure we have the right number of seats in the right locations. We review requests, to your point earlier, if you share information about a school that's interested or a program that's interested, we'll certainly review that, but we take into account a range of factors.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's good up high here. Down low, it doesn't happen. And also, with the Department of Health, another issue, you have a nonprofit doing pre-K, but they have an extra room. This is not you, this is the Department of Health, but you are one administration, and they are not allowed to put in small children for some crazy reason. All I'm saying is, we're not doing a good job on getting young kids into the public school system at an early age. And you just have to recognize that, if you talk to people in the community. I'm, I know it's, it's maybe budget, it may be policy, but it's not working. So if you have places that it's not applicable because there aren't enough kids, I know there are plenty in Manhattan who want to go to early childhood education, so I'll leave it at that. But I promise you, down here, it ain't working, and I will bring it to your attention. Now, just in terms of, I know we keep going over the, the special education issues because they cost a lot of money and they are always challenging. What are you doing about the Carter decision, just generally? How are you handling that big, huge number? It's been going on for 40 years, so it's not new. I've been here since 40 years, so I know. And I would like to know, what are we doing to try to address it? Obviously, every parent I know goes to Winston, Churchill, I can go, I know the whole list. What are we doing to keep them in the public school system?
Well, thank, thank goodness you've been here for 40 years, councilmember, because you are...
But nothing changed in 40 years.
I understand. I, I think, I think, I think in fairness, a lot has changed. I think we have a lot of work to do. You know that we have a lot of work to do. And I think we're, you're gonna hear more about this in the upcoming weeks, about how we want to take on more work around ensuring that the needs of our special education students are met. The Dyslexia Initiative that you just heard of is a big step forward. I think in the past, the question that we got most often from families is, what do I do if my child has a reading disability? What if my child's not reading on grade level? What if, what is happening in a school, in school for him is not working? Being able to say that we have, I think Lucia said, 160 pilot programs going and three actual programs up and running is a huge difference, and you know this well, councilmember Brewer, that families have been crying out for help, and, and a solution that we've had on this front, a longstanding solution, has only been our Carter schools. And so they have fulfilled a need that is, is needed, but our students should also have a public school option. And so philosophically, we're absolutely aligned with you on this front. The expansion of our specialized programs has been also, you know, we, if we, you had talked to us 10 years ago, we weren't providing active ABA, which is a methodology that many of our families seek Carter schools for.
But how much do you spend on Carter schools? Do you have an overall number?
Yeah. We are spending upwards of $800 million in Carter cases.
$800 million a year?
It's grown, and it's going to grow.
Okay, it's a big number.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so my time is running out, but I, so let's just say Carter needs to be addressed, and you need a schools that the young people can go to in the public school system. I throw out NYU, and nobody seems to know what I'm talking about. It's either Morton Supermarket or the school. NYU's supposed to provide the school. I don't know why nobody knows about this school, but it's supposed to be for these kinds of opportunities, on Mercer Street, something to think about. And then just in terms of, I know we keep going through this, but in terms of the spending of the, the 22 million was spent in FY '22. This is for special education. Can you give us not just a breakdown, but the 130 preschool special education programs that were supposed to start in July '22? How many contracts have been signed? What's the status of the contracts moving forward? Those very special individuals programs?
Thank, thank you for the question, councilmember. So we have 67 providers that are moving through the contracting process for the 4410 contract enhancement, which, as you know, lengthens the school day, provides additional funding support for these programs.
But it wants.
I'm sorry?
Which what everybody wants. They want those contracts.
So we have, we have 67 right now that are moving through the, the pipeline. They'll be voted on for this November PEP, and then hopefully a speedy registration at the comptroller's office and money to these providers that certainly didn't need it.
And it's supposed to be 130 total, or what's the total supposed to be? Do you have a sense of what the total is supposed to be?
Right now, I know that 67 are going through November, and we have others, we have a universe of other programs that we're working with. I think it was upwards of approximately 130, and for a variety of reasons, so, you know, programs for this enhancement need state approval, need to finalize a budget, we have to work out, obviously, the contract registration. So there are a couple of different steps in the process, but right now, we have 67 that are going for November PEP. We, the Panel for Education Policy, we expect we will have more in December and continue to push forward these contracts.
And you'll keep the committee up to date on that?
Absolutely.
And the other question, then I'll stop, is I know we've been through this again before, but with those young people who have, were supposed to get the services last year, didn't get them, just be specific as to how much of the ARP funding is DOE using this year to address these preschool-related services for these children, and is there enough money to address their needs? I don't think there is.
So I will say, in terms of, in terms of stimulus dollars, and this again goes to the point, yes, in terms of stimulus dollars, in FY 2023, for the special ed pre-K support enhancements, I think we're looking at $71 million for that. And just to tie it back to some of the previous conversations, this is then another substantial investment in our early childhood system, along with the 456 for 3K that is reliant on stimulus dollars. along with the, um, four hundred and fifty-six for three K that is reliant on stimulus dollars at this, at this moment in time. And that's some of where these, these are, some of where our most substantial spends are going.
That's the Saturday schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, some of those programs. No, the Saturday schools is separate?
That's separate. That's additional funds and what Christina, some of what Christina talked through earlier, actually. So these are just the two early, uh, early childhood programs, are those two.
And if, if I could just very quickly add, for, for those programs that are going through the contract, uh-
Seven.
Sixty-seven, it covers over twenty-seven hundred special, uh, special class education seats that are going to be stabilized in the sector. And we are certainly working with those providers to add additional seats above and beyond the seats that they're serving. But the enhancement will cover their existing seats, and so we're very happy about these sixty-seven providers moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. I just want a quick question on the same topic. I know we were supposed to hire thirty-eight, um, inclusion specialists. Um, so far, how many have you hired? You were supposed to hire thirty-eight. How many have you hired?
I think I will have to get back to you on that.
Get back to me on that. Okay.
I, I can't, I can't share that there was a, you know, portion of money that was transferred to the Special Education Office to improve related services. So there was a pot of money that we took that was initially going to go to central staff, and we are providing it to, um, provide related services to families that are in CBOs so that they can get their related services.
Um, how do you plan on implementing, and we haven't talked about that, and this is very important to the council, um, forty-four-ten? How does that plan to be implemented? That's baseline into our budget.
Yeah, so the forty-four-ten was what I was just talking with Councilmember Brewer about in terms of the sixty-seven providers that are currently going through the contracting process right now.
Does the contracting process change? Do, do, have you extended their days? How does that look? Can you?
Yeah, so the forty-four-ten contract enhancement extends the days from a five-hour day length to a six-hour and twenty minutes day length. And that brings it into parity with other pre-K and three-K programming, and that also results in, um, teachers receiving additional funding.
And out of that eight hundred, um, when I did my early, when I did my hearing last month, I talked about the eight hundred students. Where are we with our eight hundred preschoolers that are still sitting at home?
So right now, among the sixty-seven providers that are moving through the, the contract process and the seats, the twenty-seven hundred seats that we're stabilizing, we are working to increase the number of special education seats that they're serving. And we'll have to circle back to provide the exact number of where we stand. We're right now working that through the, the contracting process.
Okay, remember, today is November fif- sixteen? And school started in September, so.
I, I just wanted to, to update the record, but you're absolutely right that no student should be waiting. Um, that number has gone down to two hundred and eighty-one students, and two hundred and nine of those students have had an IEP meeting within the past sixty days.
Um, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Gutierrez and Shaker. Councilmember Shaker, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph. Um, I have two questions, but before, um, getting to them, I just wanted to make a general comment, uh, of, uh, my full agreement with Chair Joseph, Councilmember Brewer, and Councilmember Wrestler about our deep concern, um, as a council about the administration's commitment, um, to, uh, universal pre-K and early education. And, and you're gonna tell me about, uh, that it was temporary stimulus dollars, that it's rightsizing, all those things. But the fact of the matter is, this was, this is a value, a value that was committed to by the City of New York. The benefits of early education and universal pre-K for children are clear. The benefits of how it keeps public school students in the public schools from an early age are clear. And so to see all of these terms being used in a way that is, raises serious questions to us about the administration's commitment to ex, to both protecting and expanding, uh, universal pre-K. And so on that note, uh, my first question is about, uh, a letter that Chair Joseph and I, along with our colleagues on the committee, had sent to the DOE about instructional coordinators, social workers, and policy support specialists, um, in early education that were accessed. Um, and the testimony provided last, at our last hearing on this issue, uh, was later revealed to be incorrect. Um, there were, um, uh, policies, uh, social workers, instructional coordinators, and policy support specialists that were accessed. We followed up with our letter. We have not heard a response yet, uh, from DOE to our letter about what exactly has happened to them. Uh, so I'd like to ask you all, uh, since we're here, uh, when will these positions be reinstated, uh, for our, our pre-K classes and three-K classes?
So, thank you. Appreciate the question. And just to say, really do appreciate the shared value around zero to five and early education and how critical it is. And I think it's one we really share, not just for three-K and pre-K, um, but also for special ed, pre-K in particular, and also for zero to five in total. So just understand the points of difference, but really do share that priority and how critical it is to get kids, especially our most vulnerable kids, off on the right start. Um, to the second question, I actually don't think between us, we have the right folks here to respond to you today, but we can commit to getting back to you soon, um, and we'll do so, and, and understand.
Thank you. But, you know, that, the fact that we haven't received an answer yet, the fact that these positions within our early education programs have been, um, accessed, again, just is further evidence, uh, of why we are very concerned about this administration's commitment to early education. Because now it's, it's in addition to funding and questions about, um, and reductions in funding for the expansion of the program, it's actually positions in the classroom that are, as you testified to, affecting our most vulnerable students in particular, uh, when it comes to early education. So, uh, we would expect to have an answer on that, and frankly, expect to have those accessed, uh, positions and those teachers reinstated in their classrooms. Otherwise, how can we provide the support for early education? Uh, my, my second question is about, uh, with the stimulus dollars, uh, and the, the plan for relief funds, there's also now an asylum seeker crisis that you all know well that we're facing, and a number of multilingual learners coming into our schools. This is something that I've been very vocal about since the very beginning, about bilingual education, and particularly bilingual education around multilingual learners. Before, long before the asylum seeker crisis, I think every school in New York City should be fully embracing bilingualism, bilingual literacy, um, and supporting multilingual learners. But now we have a lot of students in the classroom that don't have those supports, and a number of schools and classrooms across the city that are not adequately equipped, uh, for bilingual education. Um, and there are a lot of challenges, uh, to obtain skilled teachers because the bilingual certification requirements are so high. And so I'd like to know, what with the stimulus dollars and the, for the years ahead, what is the plan for the Department of Education to rapidly expand and support bilingual education, um, in our schools?
Keep forgetting that. Thank you. We're absolutely committed to providing high-quality education to our multilingual learners, and, and you're absolutely right, we need this now more than ever. Um, a few things that are happening on this front. Um, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues in the Division of Multilingual Learners, so I'm gonna refer to my notes. But, um, we are, there is a five-year plan to open and expand our bilingual, uh, programs. Um, and with the goal of having, uh, a, a large number, a significant number of programs by twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and the executive budget currently includes significant investment to, to scale and sustain programs. Um, and our, our colleagues in the Division of Multilingual Learners are certainly doing that with a focus on, um, programs for our older newcomers. Um, particularly, they're working with transfer schools, existing transfer schools, to expand and enhance programs within those schools, uh, to support our newcomers. Um, and they are given, uh, they're certainly working with Project Open Arms on instructional guidance to schools, instructional resources, and they're doing all of this in partnership with our superintendents.
Thank you. And if the Chair will, will permit, uh, I'd request that we see a more detailed plan, um, from the Department of Education on what the plan is for bilingual education, because that's a now problem, right? And I appreciate, and you all know it too, but it is a problem that is growing more dire every single day. So, uh, having a detailed, uh, proposal from you all of how you'll expand bilingual education in our schools would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I just thought of something. Um, if our preschoolers with IEPs that are mandated, so that's a legal document, right? And they're not getting services, and forty-four-ten is baseline into our budget, correct? We're, we're clear, right? By not providing these services, we are opening up ourselves to even more Carter cases. So can you guys, and so far, we're only, what, November? My estimation, this will bring us to at least a billion dollars, according to the Comptroller's Office. Could you guys clarify that for me?
Can I just say one thing, which is, because I do think it's important as we think about the stimulus cliffs? The forty-four-ten enhancements are actually also being funded by stimulus dollars. So it's another, uh, stimulus spend on early childhood education. So just wanna add that to, to the nonbaseline stimulus conversation. And then over to you on Carter.
Uh, yes, Chair, I, uh, absolutely impacts the Carter program, but, um, most in, most importantly, it impacts the students that are not being served. Um, and our obligation and the need is to serve every kid. And when we said for all, it really, we agree, it does need to be for all. Um, I can assure you that we are working as quickly as we can to, uh, provide interim supports to the students that are still awaiting placement. Um, and the Special Education Office has been working closely with those families to devise programs and services and supports while they wait, while they wait that placement.
According to my records here, these seats are legally mandated as of June of twenty-twenty-two. We are now in November. These parents, they call us, and they call me across the city. I get phone calls from parents not having seats, not having transportation to and from their programming. So this is not something that's, you know, on a regular, this is regular for us. Councilmembers, we get this all the time. The parents call us. So I just think, um, I need a breakdown as to when they're getting their seats, how soon, how long. Because Carter cases, based on this I'm seeing here right now, these are how our Carter cases are gonna go up. And this is unacceptable for New York City kids. Um, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to uplift what my colleagues, uh, have been emphasizing throughout this hearing about the urgency in three-K expansion, um, I want to just raise a separate question regarding these stimulus funds. In these instances where we are seeing, uh, recently arrived families enrolling in our local schools, enrolling in three-K programs, um, can you explain if there is a difference to, uh, in three-K for recently arrived students? Is there, is there more direct funding, people-to-pupil, in those instances for kids in three-K? Um, or in those instances where three-K, you know, ends at two-thirty, which we know is not, is not doing what it needs to do for our families? I hear more and more, uh, from my families and my educators, how they need support for after-school for the babies. Um, and that's something, that's a much bigger issue that I hope to dig into at some point. But is there a distinction in people-to-pupil spending in those instances for recently arrived families?
So in some, just to say, in some of the other funding streams there are, which we talked through a bit earlier, in terms of fair student funding, which goes to our K-12 schools, there, those students receive an additional wait as students in temporary housing, the asylum seekers do. In terms of how we allocate our academic recovery money for schools, those students also receive an additional wait as they come in the door to those schools. But I will turn to James or Serena, the expert, on the three-K question.
Yes, so the funding model for three-K and for pre-K are distinct from K through twelve. So, um, it differs by the setting type that, um, the program, so if it's an elementary public school or if it's a community-based organization, we do make sure that we're funding those programs to serve the students they have. And we've been in touch with, um, several programs who have reached out and, um, requested, circling back to Councilmember Brewer's question about adding additional classes, that in certain areas of the city, we've seen the need to increase services, increase classroom capacity to accommodate families that are part of this group. So we've certainly been very plugged into it and working closely with our colleagues.
And just for my clarity, the DOE classifies recently arrived families in temporary housing, just under tempor-, uh, temporary housing, too. Is it all just one umbrella category for these families?
Um, so that's a very good question, and there's different categories in different cases, right? So our fair student, um, so our, uh, we count them as students in temporary housing. They might also show up in other categories as well, right? So for our academic recovery money, we provided additional waits for students who are English language learners, newcomers, long-term English language learners, students with interrupted or inconsistent formal education. Those are separate weights in there that, that students also receive funds for.
And in the instance where a child meets all of those weights, how does that translate in, in money for that school?
When, when students qualify for multiple weights, it's additive. And so you get an additional wait for each student, as my friends who just participated in the Fair Student Funding Working Group also.
Fantastic. Um, I have two more questions. Um, can you all share with us? So we, uh, the Chair helped coordinate a, a roundtable with some of the, the schools with, um, from the International High School Network, is that what it's called? Um, I learned so much. Obviously, they're taking in a lot of the, the families, a lot of the high school-aged families that have just arrived. They brought up a really good point about their, uh, like their, the, the ability that they have to spend per student. Um, so if you can just very quickly kind of share what that looks like, as far as, um, not curriculum, but kind of like the, like the, the gift card system, or the system that they can utilize, uh, per student in the eme-, in the event of emergencies, if that has like a specific name, if you can share what that is.
Sure, um, I can jump in here. So, um, we recently, uh, provided schools with twelve million dollars to support, um, any school communities that are seeing an influx of asylum seeker students, and then all seeking students, apologies. And also, with the mid-year adjustment hold harmless, the FSF dollars will flow to those schools to support those students.
And, and so, so just to add, the, the first of those is flowing to schools with high numbers of incoming asylum seeker students. I think the number is, uh, two thousand dollars additional students per stu-, per, two thousand dollars per student?
Per school year.
For this year, yes, for the asylum seekers. That's on top of what they receive through the Fair Student Funding Formula, which also takes these things into account. So this is just an additional two thousand dollars, which comes to the twelve million dollars. They also each get their wait for fair, through the Fair Student Funding Formula, which is how most of the funding flows. The Fair Student Funding Formula gives schools a lot of flexibility in terms of how they allocate those dollars amongst their students' needs, and those are decisions that, a lot of which are made at the school level. The tw- the twelve million dollars, which is specifically for these students we sent out, um, to schools via a, a school allocation memorandum, and that has some specific uses in it around ensuring language access and support, providing academic and extracurricular program, and creating supportive classrooms in schools. We can get you the details, but those are sort of the specifics around that twelve million to support those students in particular.
So I just have one more, Chair, follow-up. So I'm, I, thank you for that. I think that was really detailed. But I'm, so what I'm hearing is, as far as, I'm hearing it's a little rigid, the, the ways that they can spend the money consistent to the unique needs that the students have. Um, and, you know, understanding good and well that, that this funding can only be utilized with respect to vendors that are already registered with the DOE. Um, but I'm curious to see how you all are looking to evolve that list, um, to making sure that it's current, right? That we're working with vendors that are meeting the need of what those students need. These are folks that are coming in under a severe level of trauma that we are just not accustomed to in other circumstances. So I would love to see the DOE take that on a little bit more, um, with a little more sense of urgency, because that, that's what I'm hearing from principals and, and from folks on, on the ground. Um, my last question was just related to the money in the report, related to the, the digital devices. I'm really, really curious to find out if there's anything that you can share, because this will be my last comment, about kind of where the DOE is with the amount of, of devices, um, needed left to distribute to ensure that every student was, uh, was covered, um, and kind of what the plan is forward. I know that we haven't met, we haven't gotten to everybody, but just curious to see what those numbers are. Thank you, Chair.
I don't know if we have the numbers in front of us. I will say, uh, we are working quickly. As soon as schools put requi-, the requests come in through schools, for when students need devices, and we are working quickly, including in the case of some of the asylum-seeking students, to make sure we're then getting those devices out to schools as quickly as possible as they come in. But they do flow through the schools. If there's specific places you're hearing challenges or at a school, let me know, and we can definitely try and make sure responding quickly. And, and ditto on the first one, by the way. Melissa Ramos on our team, who's leading Project Open Arms, is doing a lot of work with individual schools around how they're adapting to support these asylum-seeking students. And to the extent there's a school with specific challenges with specific vendors, we'd definitely want to hear and see if we can be helpful.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge, um, Councilmember Narcisse, and Councilmember Narcisse?
Thank you, Chair. It was difficult for me to be here, but I'm here. Um, public school, um, PS, uh, PSL, right? Restarting expansion, and I'm looking at the forty-seven percent of an expanded twenty-one million in funding to increase access to sport pro-, programming across the city, focusing on schools with greatest need. So I want to know what schools got this money, and what did this, um, look like during the pandemic?
Um, so I don't have those numbers in front of me, but can most certainly get them to your office.
Okay. You gonna do that?
Yes.
All right. All right, so. Infrastructure, 7% of an expected 70 million in funding to implement accessibility improvement, infrastructure, compliance work. What did that entail?
I will also have to get back to you on the details of what is, is funding supported.
Now, I have a problem with this sign here. DOE schools will be expected to return unused stimulus fund to DOE, right? My whole thing is how were principals and superintendent supposed to support those programs and implement them? And during this pandemic, how they were supposed to do that? And now they're going to have to return the money?
So just for clarity, your question is about programming that's funded with federal stimulus dollars. Yep, so going back to what I've said today, we acknowledge that we have a huge fiscal cliff in our budget due to this programming that is funded by temporary dollars. And we look forward to working with you all and prioritizing the needs in our budget to ensure that they're funded in the baseline.
Let's say for argument's sake, those programs implemented and we're working in some school. So how does DOE plan to sustaining those after the Fed money is gone?
We are facing some very difficult times economically. And the only thing that we can do is work within the budget that we're given. But we would love to have your advocacy and your support in helping us, in partnering with us to make sure that funding for those programs are in the baseline.
All I can say, we got problem in our hands and those kids, I was in the school before I got here. And those kids, the eyes, the brain open for opportunities. So whatever we do when we're talking about the underserved area, we have to be real about it. If we want to address the inequities in our system, in our city, in our state, in our country, we have to be real about it and provide the support where the support needed. And our children is waiting for that help. So I hope we are very serious about this. $2.2 trillion for coronavirus aid relief and economic security. We're talking about CARES Act. Did any of this go to DOE and how much?
The CARES funding, I think Emma pointed this out in her testimony, but that was 700 million of that came to New York City. But the state actually supplanted that funding. And so it did, those dollars did not come directly to us and for allow us to use it.
All right, Chair, thank you. I'm going to leave it as that. But all I have to say, let's be fair to the city of New York, especially underserved area, and address the inequities in our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. Councilmember Lee?
Hello, thank you so much, Chair. And going back to the social emotional, I had a couple of questions, if you could just remind me also. But what is the, the current ratio for, you know, per student for each, you know, social worker or mental health professional in the schools? Is it, is it, is it one social worker for every 250 students? Is that wrong? Because I had heard that and I wasn't sure if I was correct or incorrect in that.
No, I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, and if you could also let me know in terms of that ratio, if it changed during COVID or if it's the same as pre-COVID? And I guess the reason why, just following that same rationale, the reason why I'm asking that question is because I was just wondering, based on that ratio, where we're at in terms of filling the slots? I got to be true because I'm the chair of the Mental Health Disabilities and Addiction Committee. So this is like an area of interest for me in particular, because this is such a huge issue we're seeing in our students. And so I just wanted to see what percentage we're at roughly in terms of filling those slots in the schools right now, in the public schools?
We can definitely get back to you with that number. I will say, just to get back to the theme of this hearing, it is another place where we've put 60-something million dollars in stimulus funds into social work. And so another place where we're facing a cliff in the years ahead, but we'll get back to you with the ratio numbers.
Yeah, and, and the 60 million in stimulus funding, how much of that? So I guess then the question is, how much of the total budget was non-stimulus funding, number one? And then how do we work towards baselining? Because I know that in the past, because I come from the nonprofit sector, and whenever there were issues that came up, it would start off as stimulus and then we would work towards baselining. And so I'm just curious to hear your thoughts or suggestions or any ideas or ways that we can push together to help baseline that.
Sure, so we have the federal stimulus, temporary stimulus dollars. So we definitely want to, again, keep working with you to make sure that those priorities are reflected in the budget. I feel like I would be remiss with Mark Traeger if I don't say that previously there were baseline CTO dollars for social workers in schools. So there is some level of baseline funding that is sustainable in the budget. And it is us working together on what's in the budget that's being supported by federal stimulus dollars. So we'd love to hear what you have and we can definitely connect on it.
Yeah, because it just, my thought process is I'd love to overestimate and say, okay, if every school in the city had the proper proportion of mental health professionals to students, what is that dollar number? And then how do we work towards getting that? Okay, they don't. So if we can get that number, that'd be great to start off and then work towards that. And just on the D-75 front, one thing I will say is that I know this doesn't necessarily have to do with dollars, but, you know, just talking about how the transportation really does impact a lot of the parents and the families. Because I actually am taking a D-75 intern, high school intern. And they were supposed to start this week and they haven't been able to come in yet because the transportation is an issue. And, and, you know, it's really impacting their ability to, to work, to intern, their experiences. And I just wanted to emphasize that one point, which has nothing to do with the budget, really. Well, it has something to do with it, but yeah. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, that's on my calendar. That's on my schedule too. Thank you so much.
Back, I was answering. Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse and Councilmember Lee. Thank you so much for your questions. We're going to circle right back to students with disabilities. I know earlier, we no longer provide the Special Education Recovery Services at the schools. Instead, DOE is expanding a popular seed program. So in late October, we allocated funds to, to offer compensatory makeup service for students with disabilities. DOE allocated more than $157 million to schools to offer special education recovery services. However, this year, the DOE only allocated 12.4 million to schools to offer this program. Students with disability have the legal right to have compensated services when they don't get the instruction services they need. So, given that only 40% of students with disabilities received any educational recovery services last year, what's the significant unmet students with disabilities during the pandemic? Why is it only 12.4 million that was allocated this year? And how will schools ensure that students with disabilities receive the makeup services they need and have the right to receive?
Chair, we're happy to send you a breakdown, because those numbers are very different than what I have in front of me. And that is very, not my understanding. What we, what we have allocated is $104 million this year for special education recovery services. A portion of that is for, exactly for compensatory services. And the, the rest of it is for additional special education services in the form, yes, the seed expansion is one part of that. We're doing Saturday academies. And, and just for the record, Chair, I need to correct something. In our seed program, it is occupational therapy and physical therapy. Our Saturday academy will also have speech. So earlier I said speech and I apologize and I want to correct that for the record. Our Saturday academies will also be, be providing additional instructional services and supports for students who need them. We're also doing teacher training as well as support for our psychologists. I mentioned earlier, we're expanding our 21 program, plus program eligibility. We're doing work with our special education teacher service, support services. And we're, and we're doing continued work on our Beyond Access series for families. So that number that I have is 104 million and I'm happy to send you, we're happy to follow up with a breakdown.
Well, thank you. So how do parents are informed on these programs? How are they notified, students that have, that need language access, how is that also provided for them?
Yeah, earlier I also, and I appreciate the opportunity to follow up. I mentioned a letter that is going to go out for families, that is going to go out in the next week or so. And that is going to be translated into languages, all of the DOE's supported languages. And that's going to notify parents directly of the availability of these services.
Last year, I know my, my colleagues were retired. They didn't want to work. How do you, how did we fill in that gap when we couldn't find teachers to staff these programs?
Yeah, certainly I'll, I'll let my colleagues fill in on anything on teacher recruitment as well. But I can tell you from the special education perspective, from our related service providers, we have actively been hiring both school-aged and preschool additional providers. And that's why we're sticking with the, the additional provision of services via the compensatory services and the Saturday academies. All of this remains a big lift, but it is what our kids deserve and it's what our kids, we're going to continue to do and push for, for our children.
So with the launching of the Saturday programs across the city to make up for related services, right? When will those sites be up and running? How will the families find out about them? Will transportation be available? And how many children do you, do you anticipate that will, that will serve?
We are going to have 10 sites up and running by December 10th. In terms of attendance, I will provide you regular updates. That, that notice to families is, I'm happy to provide regular updates. That notice to family is going to be going out in the next week or so. So we will definitely be actively engaging our family communities, getting back who's, taking into account who's interested and then planning for staffing based on those responses from families. But it's, it's just like our, the provision of our services last year. It's going to be something that we track and monitor throughout and get as many families as we can there.
How about in terms of transportation, which is very spotty for our New York City kids? How does that, how do you plan on addressing that?
It's, it's going to be very similar to the strategy that was used last year. So it'll be reimbursable transportation and I know that we're going to talk a lot more about that next week.
And in this, in this COVID-19 federal funding, can you give me a breakdown of how you funded our ENL students during this pandemic with the federal dollars?
Chair, I apologize. I do not have those figures on me. I don't know if my colleagues do, but I'm sure, no, they will follow up with you.
One question is, how do you, OMB is always a scary agency. But, because I worked in city government, I know people are scared of OMB. But how do you, how does OMB play a role in monitoring this stimulus spending? How do you relate to OMB, et cetera, et cetera? Because even though they are a scary agency, they are, you know, supposed to be paying attention to these issues.
Sarita came from that scary agency.
I know.
And it is, it is just as scary as people think it is. So, no, thank you for the question.
I used to be scared of them too, but no longer.
So we regularly check in with OMB in terms of the federal stimulus dollars. And they basically oversee the entire, you know, all of DOE spending, including federal stimulus dollars.
Do you submit weekly reports, monthly reports, and what's in those reports? How detailed do you get?
Sure, it's not, well, the, the check-ins that we have are not reports. It's just sort of finance teams talking to one another about the different categories and spending within those categories. As you know, the plans get updated during the cycle and those, we have close conversations with them about that as well.
Because I think there is a local law, 76, that requires you to do that. So mostly in terms of the pandemic money, which is, I think, what we're talking about expiring in fiscal year 2025. Well, it's, it'll be FY '26. But is, does that adhere to?
Yes, and I think you're referring to just public reporting our SED requirements that we have in terms of the stimulus funding. So what we do is, in order to be in compliance, we update, we send updates every six months as it pertains to the school safety plan and as well as, you know, sending up claims. I think the last couple of times we sent up any information to the state was in March and in June.
Okay, and those are the detailed reports that comply with the laws, what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you. In the shelter base, I want to go back a little bit for my students in alternative housing. In the 100 DOE-based coordinators, we understand that you already hired some of them now. We gave the process we talked about. In addition to shelter-based coordinators and the DOE using $33 million in the ARP for funding of additional initiatives, are the, any of these initiatives up and running? Which ones? And can you tell us the status?
Yes, happy to add in terms of where we are with the initiatives. So some of them include mentoring support, so ensuring that we are connecting our students in shelter with mentors. Also, there's funding for work that we already have up and running, which is specifically connecting to looking at chronic absenteeism within this population. Because we noticed that a lot of our students who are shelter-based are also not coming to school as regularly as they, as they should. So that's another example of a program that we have up and running. In the Barrow, Brooklyn, we already have a lot of our enrichment academic programs that are happening both after schools and Saturdays. So for many of these spaces, some have initiated and for some of them, we're continuing to develop programs that are informed by the feedback that we're getting from principals, from superintendents, so that every district and every school's support really is aligned to the needs that we see, right? Because while there's commonality amongst some of the academic programs and supports that are needed across the board, they're not unique to each Barrow, to each school.
Thank you. And also, same question for foster care students. What type of initiatives do you have up and running for them and what kind of outreach are you doing? And to support them while they go through this journey, this educational journey in our system?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. And as I shared earlier, we have staffed eight out of the nine and we're looking to do a similar approach, but a little different. As you know well about this population, the foster care numbers for DOE are much more spread out and smaller. So in some instances, we might only have one or two foster care students in one school community. So it's really looking at a more Barrow or district approach. Because we know in some instances, in one school, there may only be one child. But part of the, the work there is really leveraging that person who's the connector, the coordinator, who's the connector now between the agency, the school and the family that didn't exist, to ensure that we are connecting with that child and that we're also are working with them to ensure that within their academic plan, they know and have access to the support that already exists on their ground. So ensuring that we're demystifying who they are, knowing individually what the needs of the students are and that the supports get to the right student at the right time. But definitely an area that we continue to build and inform by, by principals and by school communities and what they share with our team.
Thinking you're also working in collaboration with the agencies that, that monitors and handles these children?
Absolutely, and I think that has been one of the game-changing factors of being able to hire these coordinators and this, this office. Because now, instead of then like trying to figure out who do I call, now they have names, they have phone numbers. And they have people that they know that are there, dedicated to support those students. So it's, it's a lot more easier to just look at supports across the agency and to eliminate barriers to ensure that they're getting to our kids.
And that's an area that's near and dear to my heart, along with Councilmember Brewer.
I, I understand and I appreciate and I think is our responsibility to ensure that our vulnerable students have the supports that they need, especially in a post-pandemic era when we know that our babies have been affected. So.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a quick question, and you may not know this, but of the young people coming to the schools who are asylum seekers, do you know how many are unaccompanied minors? Is that something that you track? Because obviously, I guess, in my world, having had foster care, as the chair does, there's unaccompanied minors. Then there's the foster care, but you may not be in foster care, but you are sort of in foster care because you're unaccompanied. So do you not have any sense of what that category looks like for?
I don't have any, I don't have a full sense of what it looks like for that specific. I know that the way that we're tracking the, our new, newly arrived student is by looking at the students who were enrolled since July. And there's approximately about 8,000 of them. And we see the, the greatest influx in the Barrow of Queens and the Barrow of the Bronx. But that's a number that I'll be happy to look further to figure it out if there's particular ways that working with our partners from DHS and other. our partners from DHS and other, we can actually like hone in on what you're flagging, because.
There are quite a few of them, only because I'm getting calls for legal assistance for three. So there are quite a few. I don't know if they're being tracked, but FYI and.
I'll be happy to further connect with you and your staff so that we can ensure that they have the support that they need.
That was going to be one of my questions. We did get that a lot as well, unaccompanied minors coming into our system. So we got to make sure that we track them down and provide the support that they need. I know it's usually the Office of Migration supports those type of students.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you for flagging.
Well, I thank you for your testimony, knowing that you will hear from me always. Email calls to make sure that I'm advocating for my students, my New York City students, all of them. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you for your leadership on advocating for, in terms of advocating for those students. And you can't always tell, but we do appreciate your calls and emails, and they're often good nudges for us. So thank you, seriously.
Calling the next panel, Glancy Rivera. Hope I'm saying your name right. Sarita Subramanian and Randy Levine. Good afternoon. Thank you. I think it's Glamies. Am I saying your name right? Glancy Rivera? Okay. You may start.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Education Committee Chairwoman Pritan Joseph and distinguished members of the committee. I am Glancy Rivera, Second Vice President of Local 372 Board of Education, Employee District Council 37, Ashme. On behalf of approximately 24,000 members, Local 372 represents under the leadership of President Sean D. Francois the First. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in regards to the Department of Education's DOE utilization of COVID-19 relief funds. School districts in New York State received a total of $14 billion from the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Cares Act, the Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRSA, and the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, although New York City received $7.66 billion in education fund, with $6.9 billion coming in the second and third rounds of funding. According to the comptroller Brad Lander, the DOE had $4.4 billion remaining in unspent COVID-19 stimulus, and that must be spent by fiscal year 2025. As of today, thousands of Local 372 staff who perform essential support services for students and communities throughout the pandemic have received no compensation from the COVID-19 relief funds to compensate them with rectative hazard pay. These men and women answer the call at personal risk of exposure to COVID-19 and its subsequent strains. Because of their selfness and dedication to the children and communities they serve, and now they are forgotten. When the school system was closed at the height of the pandemic, many of the 19 school lunch workers and 2,600 school crossing guards remained on the job. School crossing guards protected pedestrians throughout the city, and the school lunch workers fed over a million meals to students and community members in need. It is an understatement to say, these workers went above and beyond their regular job duties and put their health on the line to help this great city. Once the schools reopened midway, midway, excuse me, through the pandemic, all of Local 372 members came willing to work to contribute to the one-ground efforts to restore new normcy throughout the public schools. School aides engaged students throughout the day, greeting the children in the morning, engaging in numerous activities to support the educational development, and helping them to get to their buses at the end of the day. Our community titles, including parent coordinator, school neighborhood workers, and power professionals resumed working with parents to navigate the DOE and work with the Department of Homeless Services to ensure the children arrive at the school safely. After months and months of homeschooling and adjust to hybrid schedules. And substance abuse prevention and intervention specialists, SAPIS, work with the students to address compounding issues of a new mental health crisis that isolation and insecurity place on the students and family. Many Local 372 members came to work, whether sick, traumatized, or having lost a loved one. Hazard pay won't restore anything, but these workers deserve appropriate compensation and acknowledgement of their service and sacrifice to our students and communities. In addition to the lack of hazard pay, I want to highlight that our students are facing a more significant mental health crisis than ever caused by COVID-19 pandemic and shutdowns. It is critical to monitor children's mental health, promote and coping resilience skills, and expand access to services to support their overall mental health. The SAPIS program has been and continues to be the best equipped to shoulder this responsibility. The DOE should therefore allocate COVID-19 relief resources to increase the availability of SAPIS in our public schools. Since 1971, SAPIS have provided essential emotional strategies and services to help youth remain learning ready. SAPIS already, excuse me, SAPIS are already trained and ready to respond to COVID-19 mental health crisis and have always been proactive in providing students and their families with the tools to navigate societal, personal, and peer pressure that derail healthy academic, social, and individual development. SAPIS are also responsible for monitoring behavior and offering resources and services to support when they struggle to improve. SAPIS are more versatile and cost-effective than social workers, who must be trained to provide the same broad range of one-on-one and group-based services in promoting and promoting. It is estimated that SAPIS can directly reach approximately 500 at-risk students. More than ever, in this current environment of violence on the streets and the schools, New York City cannot afford to neglect this important work as the number of SAPIS positions. A concerted effort must be made to restore SAPIS numbers to their peak unemployment levels. You have the power and the authority to ensure our children's needs are met so that they can fully reach their potential. Without SAPIS, students in crisis are robbed of opportunities and skills to adapt a problem. The city must do more, which is why the DOE should invest COVID-19 relief resources into SAPIS. Again, thank you for the opportunity to appear on behalf of Local 372 Board of Education and its membership to discuss the importance of both hazard paid for our essential workers and investing in SAPIS positions as they relate to unspent COVID-19 resources available to the DOE. At this time, I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Sarita.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and Councilmember Brewer. My name is Sarita Subramanian, and I'm the Assistant Director for Education at the New York City Independent Budget Office. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this oversight hearing. In my testimony today, I will provide an update on how much federal COVID aid the DOE has spent in 2021 and 2022 fiscal years, and what funds remain for 2023 through 2025. I will also provide details on IBO's estimate of how much funding the city may require to continue programs that have been paid with the COVID relief that are expected to remain past the expiration of funds. Lastly, I will discuss the need for increased transparency around the budgeting of the federal COVID aid. Total federal COVID relief currently allocated to DOE is almost $7.7 billion. The majority of almost $7 billion is aid that is restricted specifically for educational uses from CURSA and ARPA. In addition, the city has allocated $607 million to the DOE from its $5.9 billion in unrestricted state and local fiscal relief funds, also from ARPA, ARPA SLFRF. Finally, ARPA also authorized spending to enhance remote technology, learning technology, through the Emergency Connectivity Fund, for which DOE received $125 million in 2022. A total of $3.5 billion was spent on education across all sources of federal relief in 2021 and 2022, as reported in IBO's Federal COVID Relief Spending Dashboard. The DOE spent about $2.9 billion from restricted education aid, 85% of funds spent, $400 million from ARPA SLFRF, and $125 million in ECF funding. Overall, the city has spent 68% of its total CURSA allocation in '21 and '22, which under federal rules must be used by September 2023, and about 31% of its total ARPA education funds, which are available for an additional year. The largest programmatic use of federal education aid, $724 million, has been to cover the entire budget for the New York City School Support Services, the nonprofit that manages the hiring of custodial support staff in schools. Another $388 million has been used to fund the expansion of the city's 3K program to all 32 districts across the city, although not yet universal. The city has also spent $1.1 billion in two large budget codes, ARPA for schools and CURSA for schools. This spending covers many different programs, but because of all, but because all the spending comes out of these broad codes, there's currently no way to identify which programs are funded, an issue I will address in a moment. Notably, ARPA specifies that at least 20% of restricted education funds, a total of $960 million, must be spent to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions, such as after-school or summer programming. ARPA's learning loss spending requirement also directs districts to ensure that these interventions serve students' academic, social, and emotional needs, and address the disproportionate impact of the pandemic on student subgroups, such as students experiencing homelessness. Through the end of fiscal year '22, $526 million has been identified as spending for learning loss, including funds to pay for academic recovery, additional school-based social workers and other mental health staff, summer rising, special education services, and early literacy support. As IBO testified last week, as of the end of fiscal year '22, DOE had claimed $2.9 billion of its $6.9 billion allocation from education-restricted funding sources. Of the unspent funds restricted for education use, $3.7 billion has been budgeted for '23 through '25, as of the adopted '23 budget, leaving about $280 million in unbudgeted funds that must be used by DOE. The city released the November update of its financial plan yesterday afternoon. However, this testimony does not yet reflect those revisions, as details of the update are not yet available. As of this week, $1.6 billion has already been spent in '23. The DOE has allocated over $800 million in federal COVID aid from 2021 through 2024 to restore planned reductions in school budgets, to fully fund schools based on the city's fair student funding allocations, and to maintain school budgets despite enrollment declines. The latter accounts for $400 million, $200 million of which was just announced last week for this school year. Please note that the $200 million reallocation has not yet been reflected in the November plan. As of the adopted budget, IBO estimated $1.1 billion could be required in 2026 and each year thereafter to fund programs that are intended to continue past the expiration of relief funds. Of the $1.1 billion, $393 million was projected for the continued 3K expansion to universal access. The administration has indicated it may not continue this expansion as planned and has reduced the 3K budget in its recently released November plan. We do not yet have the full plan details to determine how the federal relief was impacted. Excluding 3K based on prior plans, about $800 million would be required annually for summer rising, expanding preschool special education programs, providing additional social workers and other mental health staff, expanding career pathways and opportunities for apprenticeships for high schoolers, and maintaining community schools, among many other programs. I would like to end with a recommendation for increased transparency around the budgeting and spending of these federal stimulus funds, specifically for DOE, to use discrete budget codes for more, if not all, of the initiatives funded through these federal relief programs. Having dedicated stimulus budget codes has been helpful to closely track the COVID aid. Several initiatives already have their own budget codes, making it easy to analyze spending. For example, 3K expansion, special education pre-K funding, funding for District 75 programs, and New York City School Support Services all have their own dedicated budget codes, and often one per revenue source, ARPA versus CURSA. However, other budget codes contain many initiatives under generic titles that make tracking programmatic spending impossible. Including actual expenditures for '21 and '22 and budgeted amounts for '23 through '25, $2.4 billion has been allocated for either ARPA for schools or CURSA for schools. This is a large amount, about 34% of total education federal COVID relief aid. And lacking a breakdown of those funds within the contours of the city budget makes it impossible to track what initiatives receive funding. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for holding this hearing. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Randy Levine. I'm Policy Director of Advocates for Children of New York. Over the course of the pandemic, Advocates for Children heard from hundreds of families whose students were not getting the educational support they needed. We heard from families whose children had to wait months for an iPad, who did not have sufficient connectivity for their iPads to work, or didn't have a quiet space for remote learning, whose assignments were provided only in English, or whose special education services simply didn't translate over a screen. These groups of students were often overlooked and underserved before the pandemic, and the inequities have only grown worse. Following this unprecedented disruption to public education, we are grateful that the DOE received more than $7 billion in federal COVID-19 relief funding. Every dollar is needed, and it's important to ensure every dollar is used wisely. While the DOE is investing in some very important initiatives, we are worried about delays in spending. The clock is ticking. The clock is ticking, with limited time for the DOE to use this funding, and with students waiting for the support they need. To give just a few examples, the DOE committed to using ARPA funding to hire 75 shelter-based community coordinators, and the council negotiated city funding for an additional 25 coordinators to help students in shelter get to school every day and get needed educational support. But two months into the school year and with an influx of students entering shelters, only 18 of the 100 coordinators have started working, and that happened just this week. The DOE committed to preschool special education enhancement contracts, with the goal of helping preschool special education programs run by CBOs to recruit and retain teachers, and to add 800 seats to address the shortage of preschool special education classes that has led to children with autism and other significant disabilities sitting at home in violation of their legal rights. While 130 sites applied for the contract enhancement last year with an anticipated start date of July 2022, no contracts have yet been signed. And also to answer a question that you asked the DOE earlier, the DOE has hired only four preschool inclusion specialists for the entire city. The DOE has a legal obligation to provide students with disabilities with compensatory services, to make up for what they missed and address their lack of meaningful progress during COVID-19. However, last year, as publicly reported, a maximum of only 40% of school-age students with IEPs at district schools received any special education recovery services, and many students who ultimately received services went most of the year without them and received only very limited services. While the DOE allocated $157 million to schools last year to provide recovery services, the DOE allocated only $12 million to schools this year to provide compensatory services. That's the specific amount in the school allocation memo that went out to schools specifically for compensatory services. And the school allocation memo didn't go to schools until late October. So we are very concerned that students have not been receiving the makeup services that they need and have a right to receive, that there has not yet been direct communication to families about the availability of these services, and that there's no plan for transportation for services taking place outside of the regular school day. There's more information in our written testimony about some of the concerns we have, including around the need for increased transparency, as my colleague from the IBO just noted. I want to end, though, by noting that it is critical to focus on the sustainability of the important initiatives and supports that are being launched by the DOE that will continue to be needed when the COVID-19 relief funding expires. The DOE is investing COVID-19 relief funding in the expansion of 3K, in hundreds of social workers, psychologists, and nurses, restorative practices, support for students who are homeless, preschool special education programs and supports, the expansion of community schools, literacy initiatives, bilingual programs, career pathways programs, and other initiatives that will be needed in the long term. It is important for city, state, and federal elected officials to begin figuring out a plan now to sustain long overdue initiatives that are critical to meeting the needs of students. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. This is very detailed, and as you recall, those are the same questions along the lines that I asked around pre-special education, 4410. Shelter-based coordinators, these are the questions I was asking. A lot of data has to come back, and they need to start figuring it out before 2025. Thank you so much for your testimonies.
I've listened to the wonderful testimony and relied on the three of you, whether it's unions or advocates or IBO over the last few months, and I can't thank you enough. I guess my question is, do you see them spending this money, and who's doing the oversight of it? Because it does seem to me that we don't, even if we get some information, it's very hard to get the granular. So maybe the information that's supposed to come vis a vis the laws will help, but do you have some sense of who's doing the oversight, who's doing any kind of evaluation if any of these programs are working with the federal money? Does anybody have any sense of that? Randy always knows everything.
Well, we certainly do track the spending, as I mentioned, on our dashboard. We also have been trying to basically tithe the initial plans as announced back in 2021 with what we see in the budget, and there isn't a direct crosswalk right now. So that was what I was referring to in terms of the programmatic initiatives. Some we are able to track, like I mentioned, but some we have to rely on asking DOE for that specific information. And so that's, you know, it would be great to have that information publicly available.
The chair asked so articulately about the 800 students who are home, and they said some percentage, I can't remember, 100 and something, were getting services. But that's the kind of thing that, who's paying attention to that? Because that's a huge number of young people who are not getting services. That's the kind of question, I guess, I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, that's a great question. Advocates for Children is certainly doing our best to monitor the rollout of the important initiatives that are very much needed for the students we serve. I'll say quickly, as far as the spending itself, how much funding is actually going out the door. While we're monitoring the programmatic components of it, we're really reliant on the DOE, the Controller's Office, the IBO, and the city council to get that information. And so we're grateful that you're holding this hearing today and think that we need to keep harping on that. As far as the specific question with respect to preschoolers with disabilities, we are certainly asking the Department of Education a lot of questions and advocating and advocating to ensure that they open the classes they need this year. Just to flag for both of you, since I know you've been following this issue closely, the number of seats needed is going to increase over the course of the year, because when children start 3K or pre-K or childcare, often that's the first time that they're identified as needing an evaluation, and then it takes time to get the evaluation, and then to get the IEP meeting and the recommendation. So for that reason, we see additional students needing the class placement over the course of the year. And then also, there are children who transition from early intervention for zero to three year olds with developmental delays and disabilities to preschool special education in January. And so our eye is really looking at this point in January and the spring, because we do not want to end up in the same situation where there are 800 children with disabilities waiting for seats in their legally mandated classes. We want to ensure that there are zero children waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. That's what we're looking at. We'll keep our eyes on the money. We'll keep our eyes on the students, how many students, and I told them if they're looking to roll back on card cases, this sure isn't the way to go about it. So thank you so much for your testimony, IBO. Thank you so much as well, Local 372, right? Thank you. Now, we're moving to witnesses on the Zoom.
Our next panel will be Laura Lai, New York City Comptroller's Office, Andrea Ortiz, New York Immigration Coalition, Smita Varghese, Alliance for Quality Education, and Antonia Ferraro Martinelli. And we'll start with Laura Lai.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and members of the City Council Education Committee. My name is Laura Lai, and I am the Senior Policy Analyst and Strategic Organizer for Education in the New York City Comptroller's Office. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today on behalf of New York City Comptroller Brad Lander. I want to note that I have a lot of information to share, so if I run short on time, please refer to our written testimony for more details. Three months ago, the comptroller testified before this committee supporting Resolution Today, I would like to share the comptroller office's analysis of the latest available stimulus information. As of the close of fiscal year '22, DOE had spent a total of $2.97 billion out of the $7 billion in dedicated education federal stimulus funds allocated, $265 million in fiscal year '21, $2.71 billion in fiscal year '22. DOE had budgeted to spend $3.018 billion in fiscal year '22, meaning that there were approximately $310 million in unspent fiscal year '22 funds. This left a total of $3.99 billion to spend in fiscal years '23, '24, and '25. As of the June adopted plan, the city had budgeted $1.8 billion in '23, $1.4 billion in fiscal year '24, and $530 million in fiscal year '25. Yesterday, as part of the November modification, the city adjusted their plan for spending these grant funds by shifting $284 million from fiscal year '25 to '24, swapping out those funds for city dollars to fund more of 3K in fiscal year '24. This shift, in combination with rolling back the de Blasio administration's commitment to universal 3K, what the Adams administration calls 3K rightsizing, means that the city's 3K program is funded at a lower level with less of a drop-off in fiscal year '26. As discussed earlier in this hearing, the city did not roll over the $310 million in unspent funds from fiscal year '22 as part of this mod, nor did they otherwise adjust the out-year amounts. Therefore, the budget for these stimulus funds as of yesterday is now $1.8 billion in fiscal year '23, $1.7 billion in '24, $246 million in fiscal year '25. Of the $1.8 billion budgeted for fiscal year '23, the city has spending commitments of $836 million, leaving $964 million uncommitted. The $200 million to hold individual schools harmless will reportedly come out if fiscal year '24 funding pulled forward. However, the city did not make that adjustment in the November modification either. Unfortunately, beyond total spending, the comptroller's office cannot discern how stimulus funding is spent on specific initiatives by DOE on an ongoing basis, given (a) the small number of units of appropriation and budget codes utilized by DOE, highlighted also by IBO, the lack of correlation between those codes and either individual school allocation memorandum and/or stimulus-funded programmatic initiatives outlined by DOE, and (c) the fact that DOE has not provided a detailed accounting of spending thus far. I have some examples based on the amounts that you can see that have been allocated to schools and specific SAMs, and you can refer to our testimony, our written testimony for that. The comptroller urges a more transparent accounting from DOE to provide updates on stimulus spending on the priorities laid out by the administration. This funding represents a one-time opportunity for investment in our schools, and we must ensure these funds are spent equitably, timely, and effectively. With regard to effectiveness and uplifting Councilmember Lewis's concerns, the comptroller's office reiterates its previous request that DOE provide the outcomes and metrics by which stimulus-funded programs are being measured. It is important that beyond monitoring spending, we look at whether these programs are effective in achieving the outcomes for which they are intended. Are students with disabilities progressing beyond any pandemic-related losses they may have experienced? How many mental health workers and professionals have been hired? While information is critical not only for looking backward, it is also critical for looking forward as we evaluate whether or not to continue programs such as summer rising, new mental health initiatives, the new dyslexia programs, and other initiatives after the stimulus funding expires. Finally, as advocates for children noted in their testimony, in light of the sunsetting of stimulus funding in fiscal year '25, and given sizable out-year budget gaps even before the possibility of an economic downturn, new state legislation mandating class size reductions, obligations to better meet the needs of students with IEPs, and the desire to continue valuable programs that have been launched or expanded with stimulus funds, it is important for the city to begin a longer-term conversation about how to fund and meet our educational goals. If we hope to meet any of those goals beyond the expiration of federal stimulus funds in fiscal year '25, it is not too soon to begin that conversation about where to find those resources. Thank you.
Andrea Ortiz with the New York--
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we hear you.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you. I'm Andrea Ortiz from the New York Immigration Coalition. Despite having $4 billion in unspent federal funding available for academic recovery, the budget was passed with $469 million in cuts to public schools at a time when schools are still in crisis mode from the pandemic and students desperately need culturally responsive and healing schools. The increase in asylum seeker enrollment in underfunded schools has widened the gap in funding and further demonstrated that federal dollars are being saved at the expense of immigrant youth and families. Comptroller Lander's November analysis showed that 83% of the schools currently serving asylum-seeking youth across the city had their budgets cut by the DOE. Even with the $12 million in the city that the city is providing to support the 8,000 newcomers, schools will receive pennies on the dollar per student, the funding will come with hiring limitations, and the schools are unlikely to see that funding until January. And the most recent numbers show that enrollment declines were vastly smaller than projected, relegating newly arrived students to schools already operating with underfunded budgets. In addition, the city has not fully invested in the proven models of English-language learner transfer schools or the $4 million for linking immigrant families with early childhood education project known as LIFE. Older newcomer immigrant youth ages 16 to 21 have little time to learn English and fulfill graduation requirements before they age out. Therefore, they have struggled far too long to enroll in our public school system, and up until last year, transfer schools in the outer boroughs that specialize in supporting youth at risk of dropping out and helping older, undercredited students succeed have not been accessible to immigrant youth. This year, the DOE expanded access to six transfer programs for Ls in the outer boroughs, but has yet to fully fund the type of robust programming that L transfer schools in Manhattan have, and that the new programs will need to help our most vulnerable immigrant students succeed, including our students with gaps in their education. Our LIFE project, through our CBO partners, MASA, LSA Family Services, and Fifth Avenue Committee, has successfully helped over 500 limited English proficient immigrant families enroll in pre-K and 3K by providing outreach, counseling, and referral services to eligible families. Without programs that directly address the unique challenges immigrants and newcomers face, partial additions to school budgets will not be sufficient to ensure our immigrant students receive the education they deserve. The city must immediately restore the $469 million to fully equip our schools so that they're well-prepared to support our youth, invest $4 million to assist LEP student enrollment through the LIFE project, and fully equip transfer schools for Ls in the outer boroughs. Instead of creating budget scarcity, we need to be investing in proving approaches that support these newcomer youth and ensure that they can access everything that all other students can. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now hear from Smita Varghese, Alliance for Quality Education.
Good afternoon. My name is Smita. I'm with Alliance for Quality Education. This council unfortunately is working under an administration who is clearly striving for austerity for our education system. After cutting schools by at least $469 million in the summer, this administration is pursuing even more cuts through the program to eliminate the gap, which will cut access to early education services and 3K in the following years, backtracking the city's promise of universal 3K to all New York families. The New York City DOE can't afford to eliminate vacancies. Without full staffing, the agency will continue to fall short on meeting expectations of students, families, and vendors. New York City is currently behind in millions of dollars worth of payments to childcare providers, even forcing some facilities to close down. For months, childcare providers have complained that the city was compounding the pandemic's strain on the industry by not paying them on time or at all for publicly funded pre-kindergarten and 3K programs. Although last week, the city responded by pledging to deploy a rapid response team to childcare centers, at this time, how could this administration justify further cutting the DOE, which is in charge of administering these payments and services? Cutting resources to the Office of Equity and Access, as well as the Office of Multilingual Learners within the DOE, will impact our schools and our commitment to racial equity. Slashing these funds will hurt the delivery of services to Black, Brown, and multilingual students, as cited by Andrea, our partner at the New York Immigration Coalition. We need the council to push back against this austerity and point to the $4 billion of unspent stimulus funds meant to go towards alleviating, not starving, our education system. And I want to remind the Education Committee that cuts and fiscal austerity is not necessary, it is a choice. As Laura from the comptroller's office mentioned in her earlier testimony, the city still has $310 million in unspent funds from fiscal year '22, which can and should be rolled over for this purpose. Budgets are moral documents, and this council, we need them to, we need you guys to fight, continue fighting for strategic investments in childcare and K-12 education. Schools, we all know, are still recovering from the pandemic. Students need more academic and social-emotional supports, and we need the council to be fighting to keep the DOE-- to keep the DOE whole and keep its promise to universal 3K.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Antonia Ferraro Martinelli.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and City Council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. My name is Antonia Ferraro Martinelli, and I'm a member of the Community Education Council of District 15 in Brooklyn. And I'm here today to urge City Council members and the NYC DOE to formally request an extension of the deadline to utilize federal COVID-19 relief funds. These funds, as you have all discussed, expire in September of 2023 and 2024, and the DOE has 4.4 billion unused funds. COVID is not over as we speak. I have COVID. My child had COVID last week, and we have new immune evasion variants that are becoming dominant just as the holiday season is about to get started. But most importantly, we have lingering impacts of COVID. And in this testimony, I will detail a few areas where federal funds could be targeted to make the most educational impact in the communities that I represent. Three of them are after-school, support for students' temporary housing and asylum seekers, and mislearning in math. One way an extension of COVID relief funds could ameliorate the impact of COVID is through after-school programs, which support students academically, socially, emotionally, and support their families financially. I liaise with PS94 in Sunset Park, which used to provide after-school programming to all 1,000 of their students. Now, they can only provide after-school to 320. And many of our schools expect their parent-led volunteer bodies to pick up the slack by fundraising and managing private after-school programs. According to labor statistics, women have left the labor force and many have not returned. There are 800,000 fewer women working since February of 2020, and federal relief funds must be extended to support elementary after-school programs so that these mothers could get back to work. We also need to extend funding to support students in temporary housing and the unanticipated influx of asylum seekers. At PS124 in Park Slope, they're struggling to serve both of these populations. The school is now 55% students residing in temporary housing. There's a tremendous need for Spanish-speaking staff, social workers, teachers, aides, and paraprofessionals. The typical caseload for a social worker could be 20 or 30 students, but at PS124, a social worker can expect a caseload of over 100 students. I am told, by the way, that there are shelter families that are keeping their three- and four-year-olds at home because there are insufficient seats at the local 3K and 4K centers. Their after-school is over-enrolled and chronically understaffed. There are only 110 spots in the after-school program, and some students have transitional difficulties necessitating a high staff-to-student ratio. Schools like this can expect benefit from the $12 million recently announced to support schools experiencing the influx of students in temporary housing, but I anticipate that this will be a long-term need. It's imperative that federal funds continue to be available beyond 2020, 2024, and directed towards schools and programs that support children who have experienced severe trauma and displacement. And finally, federal relief funds are intended in part to address mislearning. We have seen the recent drop in the NAEP scores for math amongst fourth and eighth graders. I'm hearing at MS447 that the principal worries about her eighth graders not being prepared for high school. The pandemic has left students with significant gaps in their math knowledge, and we need to have access to these COVID relief funds to get our future engineers back on track. So I thank you so much. Please request an extension of federal COVID relief funds so that New York City students can reap the full benefit of the $4 billion in unused federal COVID relief funds set to expire in two years. And I thank you so much for listening to my testimony. I hope I didn't go over too far.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Antonia. If there's anyone else logged on or signed up to testify, please use the raised hand feature to be called on. All right, so that is it for our online panel.
Thank you for all those that participated. Now, this hearing is adjourned.